Good evening. What a crowd. I'd like to call the regular council meeting to order, 7:35. 7:30, is it? 5:00 PM. Twinsburg Government Center Council Chamber. Tuesday, December 4th. Shannon, please call and roll.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Here.
Mr. Steele?
Here.
Mr. Fury?
Here.
Mr. Barr?
Here.
Mr. Scafidi?
Here.
Mr. Bellin?
Here.
Ms. McPherson?
Here.
Please rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Father, we seek your guidance for the business that is before us. In planning for the future of the city of Twinsburg, give us vision. Guide us to make decisions that are not self-serving, but for the betterment of our community, so we can continue to move in a positive direction. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time, we are seeking reelection of the president, so are there any nominations?
At this time, I'd like to nominate Brian Steele for president.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any other nominations? Shannon, please call and roll.
Is there a discussion?
Oh, discussion. Is there a discussion here?
Was it there one question that we had to question about whether or not the, if you were running for mayor and how that might affect your position as president?
I think I told Mrs. Stoffer my feelings about that, and if she would like to repeat what I said when you called me the other day, go right ahead.
Well, I think maybe you, Mr. Fury, do have a...
No, you asked it, and I told you what it was. Go right ahead.
Why wouldn't you say it?
Okay, here's what I said. I'm not sure that I'm even going to run for reelection as a councilman, okay? Right now, my wife has told me several times, she's sitting in the back, she can nod her head, okay? She's not so sure she wants me to continue on council, okay? I can tell you my plans are, I'm not so sure what my plans are going to be on Sunday, let alone nine months from now, or whenever we get the charter issues resolved. So, I don't think so, no, I'm not running for anything, I don't think.
Any other comments? And the reason for that question was, in the interest of the community, I think we had at one time agreed, or council agreed among us, that it's not really the place for a campaign to be run as council president, which is why this question came up. So, that was, that's why the question was originally asked.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Shannon, please call and roll.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Ms. McPherson?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Bellin?
Yes.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes. Congratulations to the prime.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Now, do we switch now, or go elect the vice president?
Nope. I think he can take over.
All right. He's taken off. Okay.
Okay.
How do you know you're supposed to sit?
I don't know, I forget.
Yeah, I know. Okay, you know what?
You'll stay put?
Stay there.
I kind of like this seat, though.
We only do this once a year.
Next is, we need to elect the vice president. Are there any nominations? Go ahead, Shannon.
I will nominate Joanne McPherson.
And I will second.
Thank you.
Any other nominations?
Any other nominations?
Any discussion? Any questions? Are you going to run for mayor?
Not for mayor.
I mean, vice president, you know.
That is not on the horizon.
And that was already asked by me to Ms. McPherson, just so we're clear.
Shannon, please call and roll.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Ms. McPherson?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Bellin?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Now, if you want to do your seats. Okay, go on.
Do you guys just want to switch, and then we'll make sure everybody else later?
It's up to you.
I thought we'd just move at the, had you guys move at the last meeting, and then we'd see where you're at.
That's fine. It's your call.
It's up to you guys, I'll...
It's your meeting, sir.
Okay. It's your meeting.
Just meet you.
Just meet you. Do me a favor, take that foot thing.
Oh, yeah, I need my foot stool.
Take your purse.
You got that one.
Pardon? Put it over there. I have a garbage can here. I throw stuff away. I'd be happy to make an exception.
Okay, Mr. Steele, I'll reach you now.
Okay.
A lot more complicated than it looks.
I'm sorry, honey, I threw you under the bus. I apologize. Okay, next thing is the appointment, appointments of committees. Okay. I earlier asked everybody, council members, what committees they would like to be on, and I tried to keep most of us on committees we wanted to stay on, and I also tried to be your request, okay? Some of it was not easy, okay? Maureen, you are going to be on the Public Works Committee, Community Relations, and Twins Days. Sam, Mr. Scafidi, you will have the finance...
Are you handing them out?
Yeah, I do have them to hand out. If you would pass those down that way. Finance Committee, capital improvements, the BCA, and the ARB. Wow. Okay. I'll be busy.
Speaking of that, ARB meets Thursday, and I'm the rep, so I'll go Thursday. And we'll talk about the rest of the year.
Okay. That's what I'm planning on going. Okay. Mr. Fury, you will be on the finance, the treasury, and tax incentive. Joanne, you have Parks and Rec, public safety, community relations, and the volunteer fire board.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Barr, you have public works, public safety, and the planning committee, and environmental.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Bellin, you have public works, the fitness advisory, and Glenn Eagles.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. And...
Excuse me for a second while I give this to Shannon. Someone needs to take moments off, Sam, because it's not fair to have to work meetings four nights a month.
Okay.
Is this where we have discussion? Or is that new business?
Let's see now, we are on, oh, yes, approval of minutes. Did everybody get a chance to read the minutes? Are there any additions, corrections, anything?
No.
Okay. Shannon, call and roll, so we can approve those.
In motion?
Yeah, motion. Oh, in motion to approve the minutes, so move. I'll move.
Second.
Second. Okay.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Bellin?
Yes.
Ms. McPherson?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Okay. Passes seven zero. Next one is awards and presentations, which we obviously have one.
All right, well, good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming here. Again, we get to present an Eagle Scout Award this evening, and a proclamation for the accomplishments. Now, Maureen and I were at the previous one a few weeks ago, and we looked at how many we had here in Twinsburg, and I think we're going on around fifteen in the last three years. So, you know, it says a lot about the kids in our community, it says a lot about our community to have that many Eagle Scouts. The amount of time that they're required to work, all the things they go through, the number of years, this is not a short-term goal and accomplishment. You put years in to do what you've done, and hopefully tonight, you can be recognized by our community. So, come on up. So, with a proclamation I'm going to read. Whereas the administration, council, and residents of the city of Twinsburg, Ohio, extend congratulations to Zade Byron Kleckner for his achievement in earning the rank of Eagle Scout. And whereas Zade joined Cub Scouts in October 2011 with Cub Scout PAC 67, sponsored by Faith United Methodist Church of Twinsburg, Ohio, Zade then became a Boy Scout with Troop 213 in March of 2012, sponsored by the Summit Masonic Lodge, number 213, in Twinsburg, Ohio, under the leadership of Scout Master Chip Reed. Whereas Zade has earned a total of forty-five merit badges, fourteen of which are required for the rank of Eagle Scout. He has also earned the World Conservation Award in 2015, and the National Outdoor Achievement Award in 2016. Zade has held the position of Patrol Scribe, Patrol Quartermaster, Patrol Leader, Assistant Senior Patrol Leader, and Senior Patrol Leader. Whereas for his Eagle Scout project, Zade wanted to help the residents of Twinsburg with water conservation. Working with the City of Twinsburg Environmental Commission, he obtained thirty barrels donated by the Coca-Cola Company. Zade held a successful fundraiser and purchased thirty rain barrel gutter kits. With the help of family, friends, and fellow scouts, Zade converted thirty barrels into rain barrels that were then assembled and delivered throughout the city. Fifteen of those were installed at the homes of Twinsburg residents at no cost to them. Zade is currently a senior at Twinsburg High School. He has been a percussionist for the Twinsburg Band since fifth grade. His favorite experience in band has been the marching band season, where he's finished off his final year as a snare drum. Not necessarily a snare drum, but... He has been employed with the Boy Scouts of America at Camp Montotock in the Nissau, Ohio, since 2015, and in the summer of 2019, Zade will be promoted to the position of Handicraft Director. Now, therefore, I Ted Yates, Mayor of the city of Twinsburg, express my congratulations to Zade Byron Kleckner on achieving the prestigious and honorable rank of Eagle Scout. I further congratulate his parents, Casey and Desiree, and Sister Harley, along with family, friends, and fellow scouts, as they gather to commemorate this special occasion.
Nice job.
Congratulations.
Priestess.
Is there a cake?
Oh.
It's a little...
Did you have to pack my...
I have to...
Dad, are we being rude?
Daisy.
Were you saying it was about Dave?
Oh.
There we go.
Sorry.
Okay. It's about Dave, though.
That was weird.
Do we have anybody that wants to speak to council tonight? If so, we missed it, start, please come up and sign on the paper. Okay. Anybody want to talk to us? Mrs. Walker, though? Okay. All right. The other thing I missed was me, the committees that I am going to be on.
Easy year, right?
Yeah. I'm going to be the finance, public safety, the chamber, and I don't believe we needed anybody on charter review, but if so, I would do that, because we did it last year, is correct?
Right. Thirty-five years.
You don't need to do it.
I think we always have somebody to appoint.
Okay.
The Oversight Committee, I'm not sure of that.
Right, the Oversight only meets if something comes up in between the five years, so...
Okay, so, cool. I will do that. Okay, let's move on. There's no audience participation tonight. Okay. Council Committee and Communications and Committee reports. Has anybody had any meetings between last week and now?
I did.
Okay. Joanne, all yours.
So, Parks and Rec met on Thursday. The turf flooring in the clubhouse is now finished, and they wanted to express to everyone their appreciation and their patience, waiting for the flooring to be completed, and bearing with us through the complications. Light the Night Hanukkah then is Wednesday, tomorrow, between six and eight, at the community center. Winter Break Camp will take place during the school winter break at the Fitness Center, and signups are now. That's all I have.
Okay, that's it. All right, let's move on. Mayor? Wait.
I just wanted to just make one note about the Environmental Commission in light of Zade's promotion here. Daisy Walker, she's in attendance here today. I just want to point out to everybody, she represented the entire, the Environmental Commission and attended Zade's promotion for being a distinguished Eagle Scout Award recipient. And as we all know, that's the highest achievement attainable. Ms. Walker worked with Zade, our Public Works Department, Coca-Cola, in securing the rain barrels for his project. He provided thirty rain barrels, the hookup materials, and the installation services free of charge to residents of the city of Twinsburg, which is just a terrific thing. Eagle Scout Kleckner acknowledged Daisy Walker, his mother and father, and his scout leader, Chief Chris Noga, as being the matters in the process to becoming an Eagle Scout. During that ceremony, Scout Kleckner presented and pinned lapel pins on those four matters. And I just wanted to recognize Ms. Walker and thank her for her commitment and her help with Mr. Kleckner in achieving the rank of Eagle Scout. Thank you so much, Daisy, for all you do.
Nice job, Daisy.
Our next meeting will be Tuesday, February 5th, 2019, at 7:00 PM for the Environmental Commissions. Thank you. That's all I have to say. Thank you, sir.
Next on the agenda is the mayor's report.
So, no real report. I just want to thank Ms. Stoffer for her hard work as president over this last year. It's been a challenging year, and you stuck through and did well. And congratulate Brian on being nominated to...
Thank you.
President of council. It's an honor to be there, so enjoy it.
You could also thank me, or acknowledge me on vice president. I know you forgot that one.
They're going to take a group picture, she's in the back row.
Yeah, in the back row again.
Okay. All right, next on the agenda is Department Head reports. Your option is you want to come tonight?
There's no, yeah, there's no Department Head reports tonight. This is more of an organizational meeting for council.
Are you saying we're unorganized?
At the moment, I am.
Okay, we'll move on to legislation. First one is Ordinance 108-2018.
The Temporary Annual Appropriation Ordinance for the year 2019, approved by council from estimates submitted by the mayor, providing for the ordinary expenses and other necessary expenses of the city of Twinsburg, Ohio, during the fiscal year ending December 31st,
Okay, next on the agenda is, and yeah, this will be, it's its second reading, okay. Next on the agenda is Ordinance 111-2018.
An ordinance establishing salaries, wages, and employment descriptions for certain employees of the city, and updating classifications of employees to be known as the salary ordinance.
Okay, this is, this is its third and final reading, correct? Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt Ordinance 111-2018. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Bellin, seconds. Any discussion? Shannon, call and roll, please.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Bellin?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Ms. McPherson?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Okay, Ordinance 111-2018 passes seven zero. Next is Ordinance 115-2018.
An ordinance amending the current year appropriations for the general revenue account as established in Ordinance 101-2017, the appropriation ordinance for the city of Twinsburg for the year 2018.
And that stands on its second reading. Okay, the next is Ordinance 116-2018.
An ordinance amending the current year appropriations for the general revenue account as established in Ordinance 101-2017, the appropriation ordinance for the city of Twinsburg for the year 2018, and declaring an emergency.
I'd like to make a motion to declare Ordinance 116-2018 an emergency and place it on its third and final reading. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mrs. Stoffer, seconds. Is there any discussion?
The reason for the emergency is that we have to pay some professional services that were used for legal advice to the HR department. We have to pay the bill. Any amount of $7,000.
Okay. Shannon, call and roll, please.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Ms. McPherson?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Bellin?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance 116-2018 passes seven zero. Oh, we have...
That was the emergency.
That was the emergency? Okay, I'm sorry. I'd like to make a motion to adopt Ordinance 116-2018 as an emergency. I'll second. Mr. Scafidi, seconds. Any discussion?
Use the sheet.
He's got it.
I got it.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Shannon, please call and roll.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Bellin?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Ms. McPherson?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Okay, now it passes seven zero. Okay, we'll move on. Next is Ordinance 117-2018.
An ordinance amending the current year appropriations for the general revenue account as established in Ordinance 101-2017, the appropriation ordinance for the city of Twinsburg for the year 2018, and declaring an emergency.
I'd like to make a motion to declare Ordinance 117-2018 an emergency and place it on its third and final reading. Is there a second?
A second. I'll yield. Pick.
Mr. Fury? Is there any discussion?
This is a, an ordinance to allow us to transfer money within the current budget for maintenance and repair of lighting that was actually grants. We got twenty, almost $25,000 from NOPEC, and $10,000 from Ohio Edison to pay for this. So, the amount of the transfer is $34,055. And the reason we need the emergency is we want to get the bills cleared before the end of the year. Being December, we need to do that as soon as possible.
Okay. Any other discussion? Shannon, please call and roll.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Bellin?
Yes.
Ms. McPherson?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Okay, the emergency clause passes seven zero. Now, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Ordinance 117-2018. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mrs. Stoffer, second. Wow. Coming out of the shell there. Is there any discussion? Shannon, please call and roll.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Bellin?
Yes.
Ms. McPherson?
Yes.
Okay, Ordinance 117-2018 passes seven zero. And the final is Ordinance 118-2018.
An ordinance amending the current year appropriations for the general revenue account as established in Ordinance 101-2017, the appropriation ordinance for the city of Twinsburg for the year 2018, and declaring an emergency.
I'd like to make a motion to declare Ordinance 118-2018 an emergency and place it on its third and final reading. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Ms. McPherson, seconds. Is there any discussion?
The reason for the emergency is, again, we're adjusting some accounts that need additional monies. Primarily, this is for Service Department, which runs our maintenance vehicles. There were some fire truck maintenance that needed to be done, some utilities. Also, there's a, the biggest portion of this is salt. Salt has become extremely expensive and hard to get, and our Service Department, in line with our, the administration, and with council's approval, has gone out to make sure we have enough salt, is to get as much salt as we can for the upcoming winter. So, this allows us to buy, I think, a hundred, or 1,500 tons at $170,000. So, that's why we needed the additional money. And that's the reason we need the emergency, to pay for the bill.
Any other discussion? Okay, Shannon, please call and roll.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Ms. McPherson?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Bellin?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Okay, the emergency clause passes seven zero. Now, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Ordinance 118-2018. Is there a second?
A second.
Mr. Barr, seconds. Is there any discussion?
We need to adopt it as an emergency.
amend my motion, like, motion to adopt Ordinance 118-2018 as an emergency.
I'll second his amendment.
Okay. So, now we amended that. Any discussion? We need to vote on that, correct?
Right.
Okay, Shannon, please call and roll on that, please.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Ms. McPherson?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Bellin?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Okay, the amendment passes seven zero. Now, we need to go back and, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Ordinance 118-2018 as an emergency.
As amended.[1621.12]
As amended. I'll second.
Mr. Fury, seconds. Any discussion? Shannon, please call the roll.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Bellin?
Yes.
Mr. Scapiti?
Yes.
Ms. McFerrin?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Okay, Ordinance 118, 2018 passes seven zero. Okay, now we move on to unfinished business, new business, miscellaneous. Anything? I got a couple. Okay. Mr. Bellin, do you have anything to say?
I have nothing this evening.
No, okay, okay.
Yeah, so, I forgot to give, in my last report, on the 24th of November, the Twinsburg Basketball League hosted their annual Cavs Day down at Quicken Loans Arena. And all the, all the members of the league get to go down. They get to play on the court. They get a tour of the backs, of the locker rooms, and then they get to go back in the evening if they choose and go to the game. We won the game. We played the Houston Rockets. The kids got to go on the court. It's an amazing experience. I just wanted to thank the Twinsburg Basketball League for making that a, you know, making it happen. That's all I had. Thank you.
I have some stuff.
Go ahead.
Well, under unfinished business, I'm not sure at this at the time, but I wanted to bring up and discuss at some point the committees that we have, because it seems that some may not be valid committees anymore. There might not really be a purpose for them. And then if there are any new ones that we should consider. For example, the one that's, you're on, the Fitness Advisory. It's never, hasn't met in like three years that I'm aware of. So, do we need to have a committee?
Yeah, the Fitness Advisory, I think, was a byproduct of the original agreement. And it's had a little bit of life. I don't think it's met. I don't know, it's been a long time since it's met.
I think I, we met once. It was with the schools, and then we talked about some of the bills and...
There's supposed to be certain representatives from each based on that agreement, but that agreement has been changed so significantly over the last two years. But, again, if there is a Fitness Advisory, then, I mean, there probably could still be a purpose for one, but, yeah, you would need to decide if that's...
But we tried to put it together, right? You've looked, reached out to try to see having, organizing or coordinating it.
We've looked at it, but there's never been any items for discussions or topics and...
In the past, we used to negotiate with the schools. We had shared energy costs. I think that that's been changed. We had usage costs, because it's sometimes they were getting a flat fee for so many classes, for so much access. And sometimes it went, so it's changed multiple times. I actually have a copy of the original agreement. But, again, as the mayor said, it's been amended so many times. I'm not sure what the rules are now. But the purpose of that committee was because the city financed the Fitness Center and parts of the school. There was a working arrangement and, but there were always obstacles. For instance, the, the Community Theater was challenging to get access to the, historically, that was challenging to get access to the, to the auditorium. So, I, I don't know, I haven't been on it in several years, but there was a reason for it. And I think, I think maybe you were on it the last time it met.
Yeah, it was years and years ago. But that was, yeah, it was part of that agreement. But, again, that was when there was a little bit more balance of funding and control between both. It allowed both parties to be present, whereas now we're solely responsible for the Fitness Center. So, I, I don't know that, that actual Fitness Advisory Committee, the way it was laid out in the beginning, is still, is still proper. But, again, to have a Fitness Advisory, you know, it'd be something council or deception aside.
Well, maybe we should talk to Derek also and see. But he's in the cause role.
Again, that some of those topics may fall underneath Parks and Rec, because I know that when things happen at the Fitness Center, they spend a lot of, there's a lot of dialogue at Parks and Rec about the Fitness Center.
And the other part of that question is, should we consider any new ones?
Charter allows council to create or, or remove any committees which they feel necessary to do so, other than those that are designated in the charter, planning, BZA, ARB. I think environmental is now part of the charter. Capital improvements is part of the charter. So, you know, yes, we have the ability to do that. Just need somebody to come up with, to express the changes you'd like to see made or the committees that you'd like to see added.
Everybody have any thoughts? Well, I, I do think we should take a look at the Glen Eagles Advisory Board and maybe that job description for the people who are gonna be interviewing.
Are you talking about splitting it? I've heard stuff.
Yeah.
We can do this now, or we can do it in a committee, a caucus.
The caucus. In a work session. This is not the time for this.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, then we can add that to the next caucus. Okay. I did want to say that as a follow-up for the meeting I attended in DC with local leadership, I was invited on a conference call with the White House in a governmental affairs department today with Ben Carson and Ryan Zinke. The key takeaways were, again, them going, reinforcing the fact that we're all in this together, being bipartisan, and that things have to happen federal, state, county, and local levels. They talked about the drug epidemic initiatives. And one thing I thought was really, really interesting that Brian Zinke said was, anytime we invest moving deferred maintenance off the books, it's considered an asset. So, you know, I thought that was interesting, as we're talking about our own deferred maintenance, how it's building an asset, something that we've talked about. But it was an interesting statement from the Secretary of the Interior. Anyway, oh, and then other miscellaneous. I just want to thank everyone, because this is the end of my third year in my first term. And I just appreciate serving the community on council. That's all I have.
Mr. Scapiti?
Thank you. I really have no report tonight, but I did want to thank Maureen Stoffer for leading the council the last year. She did a good job, and it's been a pleasure sitting next to you on that side. And I don't know where you're gonna be next to me, but, yeah, it's been a good run. And Brian, as the Vice President and now the President. Congratulations to you. Look forward to working with you and see where you lead us in the next year. And Joanne, congratulations on being Vice President this year. So, it's gonna be an interesting year. I think we've got a lot of work to do. I know that, just from coming off of being Chairman of the Finance Committee, we've got our work cut out for us in this, in 2019. So, I think we'll all, we'll all work together, and it should be a good year for, for us, as well as the city and the residents. And that's what I'm looking forward to. And I'm talking like this is the last meeting of the year, and it's not. That's next week, so I'm gonna stop right now. That's it. That's the end of my report.
Okay.
Maureen?
I'd like to thank all of you for your support and, and really, I really do appreciate it. I know I'm not always that easy to work with, so, thank you. Thank you for your support. It's been an honor.
Mr. Fury?
I thought Mrs. Stoffer was easy to work with, personally. Piece of cake. I had an opportunity to attend the Winter Wonderland for the first time in ten years. My son's 22. I think he was eight the last time we were there. Mrs. McFerrin was following me Sunday, as we seemed to end up in the same places. But we had lines out the door of kids waiting to see Santa Claus. It was really well done. The Fitness Center was full of inflatables. You had the Twinsburg Boosters serving food. And I thought it was really well done. And I hadn't been there in a long time, and I just wanted to see what it was like. And kids were having a great time, and I thought it was really a nice event. Before I went to Winter Wonderland, though, I went to Amos and Moses. The restaurant at Glen Eagles is...
There'd be Aaron and Moses.
I'm sorry.
Whatever that restaurant.
The restaurant at the golf course. I went to the restaurant.
Not the Cookie Factory.
Not the Cookie Factory. Thank you.
I was there, too.
And I sat next to Joanne McFerrin.
At the different tables.
And she even recommended what I should have, which was a shrimp grits dish that was really very good. Anyway, they're open from 10:00 to 2:00 on Sundays, and it was really affordable, and it was great food, and a beautiful setting. They're open Monday through Saturday, though, for 11:00 till, through dinner in the evening. And if you haven't tried it, it's really a nice place to go and eat. Tomorrow, the Historical Society is hosting a Christmas party at the Riley House at 7:00 PM.